This rich, rich family bought the land and everything. And they turned it right back into a farm again. They tore the house down and rebuilt it in the exact same.
Awesome.
Just continued it.
The light flashed.
I said we're good to go, whatever. Hey Jeff?
Hey Jeff. How are you?
Good thanks, how are you?
Good.
I have, school committee met last night and never put it back together, so. 6:30, so I'd like to open the planning board meeting. Start with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, um, we'll take roll call. We're all here except for Mr. Chennesson, we have one vacancy. Public comment, is there any public comment not related to any of the agenda items? Alright, then, sorry.
I have a few comments, but I'd like to reserve them after the presentation is on air.
Sure, no problem, just let me know when you're ready.
Thanks.
Address them. Um, okay, we'll, uh, have an appointment for Unitil 357 Electric Avenue.
So, Mr. Chairman, fill you in on this. Uh, in your packets, you have communication from the engineer for Unitil. If you've had a chance to review it, you'll notice on the northeast side of the building, they have their garage area, uh, and their, I guess, I'd call it a lean-to, the three-sided building where they'd be parking some vehicles. In discussions with their paving contractor, some concerns came up about the grade of that area. It's somewhere between 1 and 3 percent. And the paving contractor was worried that holding a grade like that would cause potential puddling and retention of water, which would cause icing issue in the winter. So, in reviewing it, what Whitman and Bingham is proposing is the installation of a double catch basin and a run of HGP E-pipe from that said catch basin to the grass swale. So, this is essentially just getting the water there in a different way before it was intended to sheet flow over that parking area into the grass swale and down. Now they're collecting it in the catch basin, piping it to the grass swale. Uh, it'll traverse the remainder of the grass swale into the water quality unit under the driveway. And they included calculations, I think they're showing, um, the original design calced out at a 70 percent TSS removal and the, uh, the alternate design as proposed this evening calks out at 69 percent, uh, total suspended solid removal, so. My understanding is that it's a negligible difference between the two. Uh, I don't know if they're calking in, uh, any sediment removal the catch basin may provide or not, if they're just calking the run of the water through the grass swale. Uh, I don't feel, and in discussion with our review engineer, I don't think that there's an engineering reason to not consider this a de minimis change. Uh, my understanding is conservation is considered a field change, uh, because it's providing the same drainage pattern in a, in just a minor difference of way.
Any comments from the board?
I mean, it seems negligible to me, 1 percent change in TSS.
Any issues, Matthew?
Um, I believe the stormwater handbook says minimum 70, right?
Uh, this is a redevelopment project, I believe it says as much as practicable.
Oh, right, yep, okay, no, no issues.
Okay. I guess I'd entertain a motion to accept the changes to the plan?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, we have a public hearing for 1079 Massachusetts Avenue, Verizon Wireless. Do, um, who is our standing clerk to read the hearing?
It's up to you, you're the boss. You get the short of it?
I guess I'll, uh, ask our vice chair to do that, please.
Alright. Find it, do you have it? Thank you. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 12, 2017 at 6:35 PM, Joseph Bellotta Meeting Room, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and discuss an application for special permit under the rules and regulations of the Lunenburg Planning Board for telecommunication and cellular towers and an application for site plan approval under Section 8.4, protective bylaw of the town of Lunenburg. The application is for an installation of a 75-foot monopole and associated appurtenances at 1079 Mass Ave., Map 60, Parcel 55, Lunenburg, Mass. Owner is Town of Lunenburg, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. Applicant is Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, 118 Flanders Road, Westboro, Mass., 01581. Copies are on file at the planning office.
Thank you, um, is there someone here to present?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Victor Manugian, I'm with McLean Middleton Professional Association at 900 Elm Street in Manchester, New Hampshire. Um, with me on my team tonight is, um, my colleague Tyler Haynes, um, who worked on the filing with me. And back row left is, um, David Vivian, he's with Structure Consulting Group, he's the site act that's responsible for this site. To his right is Keith Valente from C Squared Systems, who prepared their radio frequency report that's filed with our submission. And then immediately in front of the two of them is Oscar Suarez from Duberry Associates, um, that designed, that prepared the zoning drawings that are before you. And I will say the latest amended zoning drawings, um, which had a little bit of shift, which I'll get to, um, I just want to do a quick history. I've been on this file for about two years. In October 2015, um, the town did issue an RFP. Um, we submitted a response on behalf of Verizon Wireless on December 18th of 2015. On January 28th of 2016, the town manager awarded the contract to Verizon Wireless. Um, we then had to proceed to town meeting. We did that on May 7th of 2016 to get, um, the town body to approve the selectmen leasing the land to, for wireless communications facility. Took about a year forward until we had the lease finally signed by both the town and Verizon Wireless on May 11th of 2017. So, um, this would be our final step, uh, assuming we get approval prior to getting, uh, the building permit. So, we're here before you tonight asking for both a special permit for the facility and a, and site plan review. I just want to briefly go through the photo sims that we, uh, have on the screen. And we'll just go one by one, uh, this shows the ads built. Um, when I get to the zoning drawings, I will point out that after a meeting about three weeks ago with, um, John Londa, the, um, school facilities manager, uh, there was a request made that we shift the tower 20 feet to the northeast so that the, there is no, uh, damage to the track and the paving, which I understand is almost complete. So unfortunately, these photo sims, uh, show it where it was then, so it'll be 20 feet to the right, but it actually will be four feet lower in elevation. Um, so it'll be less visible from the surrounding neighborhoods by four feet, um, because we kept the, uh, height of the tower the same at 75 feet. Um, the next shot will show the, uh, location, uh, and the track. And then we have some, uh, before and after shots. So this is what the light looks like now. And afterwards, after we, um, build a new tower and put the lights back on, um, at the height agreed to with the school department. Uh, there's a few more after this. So here's a before and after. Uh, again, other than being off to 20 feet to the right, that's what it's going to look like. And another view from another side of the track.
Excuse me, Victor. So it'll be 20 feet off to the right and four feet lower downhill, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. And obviously, this is without, uh, leaves on any of those trees, so once the tree cover is up. And now, this is the compound area that we're leasing, which is, uh, 14, uh, let me get that right. 14 by 28, uh, before and after. The equipment, including the, uh, generator will be there. Um, we've put bollards around it for safety, as well as a, uh, a roof, uh, ice shield to protect it, all the equipment from, uh, any falling debris, whether they be ice from the lights or, uh, from the trees or branches or things like that. So other than being 20 feet over, uh, these were the photo sims that we prepared. What we are proposing, and we'll go to the photo sims, is a 75-foot monopole. Not there?
No.
It's on my desktop, so just. What's that ZD? Yeah, there you go. We'll scroll down to, uh, um. Okay, we'll stop here. Uh, this is a, this is a depiction of the 75-foot monopole. Um, at the top will be Verizon's antennas, uh, 12-panel antennas, uh, three arrays of four. Um, the center line for those antennas will be at 73 feet. The antennas are six feet in height. In addition to that, on, right below the antennas you see, uh, the cluster will have nine radio remote heads, which are the, uh, radios that communicate with the other towers, and then two junction boxes. In the base, on the drawing on the right, um, is the fenced-in compound that I described earlier. And in there will be the equipment cabinets, um, I believe two equipment cabinets, um, and the, uh, generator, along with the, um, 250-gallon propane, um, tank. It will be surrounded by a six-foot stockade fence, um, that will be painted white. Any, any questions on the drawings right now before I proceed?
I have a question.
Sorry, Ed?
Um, are the, the lines that, um, you've got an access easement and you've got a, um, utility easement, are any of these proposing to cut the new pavement?
Uh, no, we are.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we have some crossings that we have to cut.
So that's, that's new pavement?
Uh, good evening, I'm Oscar Suarez with Duberry Engineers. Um, as you can see on Sheet Z4, uh, we're going to be for an extension of, uh, about 20 feet. We're just to make the turn because the property line on that corner, we're trying to go left and turn right into where the tennis courts are currently, so, uh, that would be the one way of getting up to where the compound area would be.
And you're coming from Mass Ave?
Correct.
Do you have work proposed in Mass Ave?
Uh, that would be up to the utility company, I, I don't know yet, uh, the limits of that work.
I, I only ask because I don't know what way you came in, but the state is currently overlaying Mass Ave and DOT has a five-year moratorium on access to the road once they've paved it. So I don't know if you'd, it may be in your best interest to give them a call tomorrow and ensure whether or not, if you're going to get into the road, that you do that sooner rather than later.
Yeah, that's our. It will be from, typically it's from the existing overhead wires, so I don't think we're going to be doing any work per se, as far as I know right now.
Sure, we'll double check.
Yeah, just more, more caution for you than.
Well, they are, they are showing it connecting to an existing telephone pole in the right-of-way outside the pavement. So that should be fine. It would be underground to the pole, I assume?
Correct, it'll be risers on, on the ground and then into the property.
Thank you.
With our submission, we've also, um, filed a, um, maximum allowable emissions report. Uh, that was prepared by, prepared by Dr. Hayes. Um, Dr. Hayes, uh, is an expert in radio frequency emissions. Um, and his current credentials are in this submission. Um, his conclusion, um, stated, states that the facility, uh, will comply with all, um, regulations and guidelines for radio frequency exposure, um, with this proposed installation. So, um, we, we are, under our FCC licenses, are required to comply with the emission levels that the government allows, and, um, well, we're well below that. Generally, uh, one set of antenna arrays is anywhere from, uh, 2 to 4 percent of the allowable maximum, uh, exposure under the FCC regs. Um, but the, um, experts' report is saying that we, we will comply with that based on his review of our, um, equipment installations. Um, we also submitted, um, a radio frequency, um, report, um, and Keith is here, Keith Valente is here. If there's any questions on the propagation maps, on why we need this site. Um, but the general reason we need this site is to improve coverage and add capacity, um, to the existing area. Uh, the demand is, is, is so high that Verizon picked this site, um, to put a cell tower. Um, and once the cell tower is online, uh, it's, um, uh, it's going to help the central sections of Lunenburg, again, to improve the deficient service along Route 2A, Mass Ave, Northfield Road, Townsend Harbor Road, Harbor Road, the Lunenburg Public Schools and their district offices, and obviously the surrounding, um, roads and, um, neighborhoods. Um, as I indicated, we met, um, approximately, um, three weeks ago with John Londa, and, um, his concern was, um, uh, the proximity to the track where the track is already done. Um, so we've shifted it to the northeast 20 feet, um, and all parties, including John, um, were amenable with that. Um, aside from this, we have a separate, um, conservation commission filing, um, which I believe the hearing is June 27th. Um, Dean Gustafen from All Points Technologies is handling the ConCom filing. Um, he's already done a site visit with the ConCom. And, um, the reason for that is the equipment pad, uh, and its proximity to a banked wetland. So we're going to go through that process. Uh, we've started already, but obviously, any approvals we get will be subject to ConCom approving what we're doing. And, um, after a long road, we're here, so that's what we're asking for approval. Um, if you want me to go through the special permit criteria, um, I can, but I've listed, uh, what they are in our narrative filing and how we meet them or, or if they're not applicable. Um, and again, I'm open to any questions from myself or any of the members of the team that are here with us tonight.
In regards to the lights that are going to be on there, does the, for maintenance of those, will the property owner need special permission to work on those? Because it will technically be your pole, correct?
Um, the pole is ours, but I wouldn't think they'd need any special permission from us, because they're your lights.
Right.
And it's not gated or anything like some other sites are, so no, you wouldn't need permission for us. Um, obviously, they shouldn't go up any higher, um, than they need to to service those for interference or other reasons.
It is fenced, though.
Uh, the compound is fenced in.
The pole is not fenced, it shows on Z6, I see a pole.
Yes.
It's fenced.
My, uh, my error.
So we'll be able to access that area if we need to change lights? Yes.
It's a tight fence around the base only.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Just out of curiosity, do you know how close it is to the wetland? Features? Banked wetland?
Do you have that? The, how close it is to the wetlands?
Would you mind stepping up to the microphone, sir? I can hear you.
Yes, uh, David Vivian with Structure Consulting Group. Look on Sheet Z6. And that shows, uh, sort of the dotted lines as, as far as the, um, the setbacks on, on wetlands.
Okay, so it's the, the unit, not the pole that's close.
The pole, the pole is outside of the setbacks, it's just, it's just the equipment compound.
Okay, thank you.
There may be another sheet that has the delineation itself, and I.
I, I see it now, actually, thank you.
I, I'd need the same.
It's all on Z6.
Yeah. My eyesight is.
The other thing I didn't, didn't mention earlier is that we did file one, um, request for a waiver after our submittal, and that was to do a balloon test, um, where we're basically replacing a pole at a similar height, it was easy enough to do, um, photo sims computer-generated, uh, instead of actually flying a balloon.
And this pole's actually shorter than the existing?
Uh, the existing pole is, uh, I believe, um.
71s?
Yeah.
But with the equipment on it, you're a little, it's like 73, I think you said, is that correct?
Oh, but the pole we're building is 75.
Five.
Uh, the equipment is at the center line of 73.
Okay.
So, uh, three feet up and three feet down, so our antennas will be about a foot up from the, uh, top of the tower.
Gotcha.
Yeah, exactly, a foot. But, you know, even though we're a little taller, we shifted and dropped that distance of four feet, so it's about the same height in the, in the end, and from, you know, from sea level elevation, I'll call it.
Who is responsible for maintenance of, uh, snow removal under there? Do we know?
Snow removal where?
Uh, around the equipment. I would have to check on that, I, I imagine that the lease may speak to that. Uh, and the turf field being on school property, I would infer that it would be the school department, but I know that there's been some discussion about who's responsible for maintenance in the long term of that field and, and who, who responsibility resides with. I can certainly look into that if you'd like. I'm just curious, and. It would probably be a town entity of some sort. Yeah, okay. You talking about in case of emergency? Yeah. Or need for repair? Yeah. Because we need to get to it. You know anything about the power? Are they going to need to clean it? Do they need to clean out around it?
Meaning the school or the?
I would imagine only if they need to access it.
At all, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, they may not even need to clear.
I was going to say, I would imagine it would be a matter of, of access requirement. Yeah, you don't need to clean around that unit.
Um, we would only need access to the gate at the compound.
Okay.
Where the fenced-in compound is.
Yeah.
And if it's.
Not the pole.
Not the pole. And if it's snowing a lot, we don't always go check the sites, but if we check the site, at most, it's once a month, small pickup truck, um.
So it doesn't sound like it's critical to your operations.
Not, not in this kind of facility. If it was, if it was a side of a hill, private area, we'd plow it.
Okay.
But in this situation, we assume you're going to be clearing that area.
Mm-hmm.
And if you're not, they, they will do it. But again, it would be just to access.
Your compound.
To, to check the equipment and deal with any issues they have with the equipment or upgrades.
Um, is there any public comment from the public regarding this? Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave Rogers, 82 Highland Street. I wonder if we could have just kind of a capsulated, um, uh, restatement of this situation? Because I, I seem to remember that at the, was it the special town meeting when we voted on this, sir?
Uh, it was the annual town meeting.
The annual town meeting? Okay. That was in 2015?
16.
16, okay. Um, I, I thought that there was, time was of the essence of this thing, and we had to get this thing done quickly, and now, um, you know, uh, here we are, uh, a fair amount of time later, and I, I wanted to see why that was the case. But, uh, am I, uh, to believe that, that the reason this is happening, sir, is, is that the, uh, it was at the request of John Londa, our facilities, uh, fellow for, for the town?
Do you want me to answer?
Yes, please, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you.
We approached John Londa. Um, Verizon, when it finds a gap and a coverage and capacity issue, we look at sites and, and, it was actually Dave's predecessor that had this site, that, um, approached the town, and we pursued the town for the town to issue, uh, an RFP for this site. So at, at Verizon's request, they did issue it. And we have worked with John Londa and, um, Jack Rodriguez, the, um, the DPW director. Uh, but it was Verizon that initiated the start, and that's when I say that I've worked on it two years, I think it was in our office, maybe six months prior to that, reaching out to the town. Um, I was at the town meeting that you're referring to, I'll address that too. Um, so at the town meeting, the, the, there were, uh, two warrant articles right next to each other, and this one was going to, the, the funds were going to be used to help pay for the track upgrade. Um, and, um, that's still the case as far as I know. Unfortunately, um, sometimes, even though you get the award, the leasing takes some time, back and forth with your, with your town council and negotiating the lease terms and buttoning it up and getting it signed, so, um, it, it has been delayed because of that process. But as soon as a building permit issues, um, the town will start getting the money. And I assume they have it set up, so they're waiting for that money, and that money's going to go in a certain pocket, but that's, that's the town.
Why don't you just wait here for a minute? I'm sorry, I should have directed it through the, the chairman. I thought I heard you say, sir, that, that as recently as when you were inking the contract, was when John Londa asked to, to have the, the, um, the tower moved 20 feet? Or is that, am I wrong?
Um, again, um, I'll answer, uh, through the board. That came up, um, shortly, approximately at the same time that the lease was being signed. Um, we, um, wanted to meet with the town to show what our plans were. So we, we initiated that meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong in the back there. And, um, we, um, met with him, and because of the time delay, the track had already been put down, he raised his concerns about the proximity to the track and disturbing the track. Uh, so the request came from the town side to move it 20 feet. Um, but we, we asked for a construction meeting.
And, and could we be refreshed as to, uh, uh, how much the, the lease is going to be in the terms of that lease? And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Excuse me, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Did you have the lease amount? I can't remember the lease amount.
I believe it was $30,000, but that was just my recollection from town meeting.
I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for that question, and my colleague from Vagon, he's, uh, our worksite, will get that number.
Does that satisfy your questions, Mr. Rogers? All right, just for the benefit of the members that weren't here, we do not, this is a special permit, so they need a super majority, so we are unable to render a decision tonight. So they will have to come back at some point.
There's no other public-
Is there any more public comment? Sir?
Colin Dwyer, seventy-six Main Street. In the presentation, I understand that there was gonna be a, what it was said, a generator as part of the equipment. And I'd like to know a little bit more about that generator, just what kind of a generator it is, how does it run, what does it do? Does it emit anything? Smoke or any fluids? Does it make noise? I'd like to know more about that.
It does say it's propane-powered.
If you'd like to answer that, please, thank you.
So what we're putting is a fifteen kilowatt propane generator. As I indicated earlier, it runs on propane gas, so we'll have a two-hundred-and-fifty-gallon propane tank, just like residents may have. The, the generators are very quiet. Every time I check the stats for a fifteen kilowatt these propane generator, they're somewhere in the range of sixty decibels at six meters. It, it's, it's very similar to a small pickup truck engine running. It will not run except for test patterns. So the test patterns are done every two weeks and they take ten to twenty minutes. So it'll cycle through a test run to make sure it's working in case you have a power outage when you really want it to work. And that cycle is set up for usually early afternoon, one, two o'clock, so that it won't bother anybody as far as, if they could hear it. And I had another thought and I lost it. Let me go back a step. No, I think I hit them all.
So that would be-
Go right ahead, Dave.
That would be taking place during, basically during school hours? It won't be on the weekends? Would it be during the week?
It would be midweek, during the week. They usually pick a Tuesday, Wednesday.
It's usually just once every couple of weeks?
Yeah, I think it's every two weeks now. And we usually pick early afternoon.
Victor, we actually need to speak to the question a lot about that at the end of the site visit. Because we can, we can actually program the time.
If you wouldn't you come into the microphone, sir?
Yeah.
If you had a preference.
Sorry.
We like to think that there are viewers at home watching.
And yes, they did, they thought it best if we did it right after school hours, say like three o'clock, because it's every two weeks. The cycle is actually fifteen minutes on load and then there's a fifteen-minute cooldown, so it's about a thirty-minute cycle.
Okay. Does that answer your question, sir?
And the purpose of the generators, just to function in emergencies, sir?
Thank you, that's the thought I did lose. So these have battery backups, which I believe are around eight hours. And once the battery backups can no longer handle it, the generators will kick on if there's a power failure. And then they'll run, obviously continuously. But at that point, I don't think anybody will mind it running, so you can have phone service. And I, I, Mr. Bernie explained the process tonight and we're fine with that. I just want to be sure if you have any other questions of, of my people while they're here about the coverage maps or anything, that we do that. We will be back, obviously, when, when you continue this to that date, but in case you have any questions tonight.
When is your, the CONSCOM is gonna review when?
I believe it is June twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh. When's our next meeting?
Well, it would be, it would be the twenty-sixth, but Ken has informed us that he wouldn't be here for that either.
Oh, so we're supposed to push it off?
So it would be after you went back to CONSCOM and in theory would have at least the order of conditions voted upon.
CONSCOM would be the twenty-eighth, though, there on Wednesdays.
Is that what it is?
The twenty-sixth, they would be the twenty-eighth, the same week.
I have a question. The sheet Z seven, the area around the proposed propane tank, you've got, you've got an indicator of a ten-foot no-spark zone. It's ten feet off the building, but the fence does not encapsulate that no-spark zone. And it being at a high school with high school students, I don't know how imperative that no-spark zone is.
A little technical for me, so I'll see if I got it all.
The no-spark, that would be part of there.
I had a question. Does the school have a propane tank ready?
I don't think so.
Hi, Oscar Suarez again with Duber Engineers. That sparkson is according to the NFPA seventy. So with that being said, I understand your question, sir. We could place signs to warn that there's, just to notify that there's a spark propane tank in there, if that works for you guys?
I guess my question would be, you're noting it on the plan just so it's shown? And it's not something that historically or normally is required to be fenced or have ever and any spark prevented its prevention of electric lines and other things that would inadvertently spark?
Well, the NFPA just says it's away from any ignition source, so it could be building, a bent, electrical equipment.
So the propane generator is without, is outside of that zone?
Correct. The generator itself is outside that. You can see that on sheet Z seven.
Oh, on Z seven.
Yeah, it's the detail of the compound area there.
Okay, yep.
So it's more for fixed spark creators?
Correct.
As opposed to somebody who happens to walk by and create a, a static shock or a lighter flick or something like that?
Correct. But it's, that's a good point, too.
It is, I just-
I think we could place a sign or something just so that everybody is notified not to-
Right, right.
Create a source of ignition, if you will.
Is there, it's probably not very standard, but is there an explosion zone if it were to blow up? I mean, would it, would it impact the building, the school building itself?
That I don't know, sir, but the NFPA requires the, the radius from the propane tank.
So you mean the NFPA standard?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess a general question. On Z one, the MLB six-one-dash-one is the property that is causing the lines to go into the pavement? Has, has that property owner been approached to seek an easement through their property for the utility? So that it could avoid ripping up the pavement altogether?
You are on Z four?
Well-
Z one?
Well, Z one delineates, I mean, so on Z four, the property boundary that is almost right up to the edge of pavement. Has that property owner been approached to see if it would grant a, a utility easement?
I'm gonna guess no to that question because we try to stay on the property, but-
On, on sheet Z four, are you referring to the east property line?
Yes.
So that the actual routings are happening inside the high school lot?
Exactly. Well, my, my contention was, it's a brand-new high school. They just opened this year, or last, last year, and-
New pavement.
Brand-new pavement. Right.
No, we have not approached the neighbor. We generally don't, don't do that on abutting properties and I, I see your point, though. We do have to make that one cross.
The other thing that caught my attention is on that same sheet, there's an existing catch basin, but there's no line shown from it. And in my recollection, I believe that a good number of the catch basins out there had shallow cover, potentially two feet. And looking at your detail, your cover is two feet over your pipes. And then you've got four, four inches to the center line.
Our surveyor went to pick up the catch basin. However, I don't know if he picked up the reams, invert elevations. So I don't know where, I know we show that for, since this is a zoning detail, we don't show that for construction yet, but I understand your concern. We can look into that-
Okay.
-when we get to construction.
Sure.
As long as the rim, excuse me, the invert for that pipe is visible, otherwise we have to conduct some sort of GPR testing to identify the depth of that pipe.
Very good, thank you.
We're going underneath the pavement.
Is your concern, or like, cutting, settling of the patch?
Well, it's just that it is new pavement and, I mean, they're gonna have, there's gonna be about a month, more than a month before their next meeting with us.
So we're going underneath the pavement here.
I would think that that would be more than enough time to contact and see if that was an option and to see if they could reroute it outside of all the pavement, because it's not only on Z four, it's also on Z five on the corner. And it's very, very close to the, to the parking lot limit, so I'm concerned about undermining that existing pavement with the trench.
And I guess my question is, you're talking about during construction, post-construction and sealing or both?
All of the above. Seventy-two million dollar new high school, I think that we should probably protect our interests.
And I guess, you know, another thing that they could explore in addition to-
Sure.
-that the abutter is proposing methods to ensure that the patch and the construction don't compromise the, the parking area. I don't, I don't think that that's their intent and I think that there are certainly methods out there that would seal the patch to the existing pavement in a way that was all but invisible and that would ensure that the trench wouldn't settle in a manner that would, would further damage anything in the future. So I guess I would, I would suggest you, you may want to just have an answer for-
We'll check that out.
-that as you, as you move forward.
And, and again, we would be responsible for any settling or anything with the, with the, with the excavation and repatching we do. And I believe we, we know if the town has a bond requirement, that that could cover that to ensure, not, not saying they would never do it, but just to make this board feel comfortable, that that would cover it.
Sure. I noticed there is no pavement patch detail, so we have no idea what they intend to do for patching.
And you also, I mean, it is a special permit and a site plan approval and you have the ability to condition the manner in which they, they close the site.
Would that be a conversation with DPW?
That, I mean, we could have the conversation with, with both the facilities direct, it'd probably be the facilities director of the high school. But, you know, we could also, in the month between now and the next meeting, have a conversation with their team and see what their proposal is, present that to the facilities director and just ensure that, you know, what they've put forward is, is going to be acceptable both from engineering, an engineering perspective and from an operational perspective. But, I mean, I think that there's some, you know, standard construction methods that would, would resolve the issue in a, in a pretty suitable way.
If we had them. If, if we had the standards.
No, I, I mean, there's, there are certain, there are standards that are, are industry-wide that I think would, they could easily propose that would, would solve the issue.
Would that be Mr. Launda?
What?
Facilities manager?
Yes.
Yeah.
Should we, yeah. Is it possible to either, maybe we can invite him to the next meeting or I'd just like to get some, maybe we could submit some questions to him about maintenance, upkeep of the lighting and everything, just to see if, you know, he has any input into whether or not-
We can certainly do that.
He can achieve everything he needs to do.
If you have questions, I would suggest that you submit them to me. I'll forward them to him and we'll-
Okay.
-include them as part of the, the next set of public comment.
Will do.
Thank you.
Technical property owners, the town, so that would be the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, I believe they're the ones who signed the lease.
Okay, so they would make, they ultimately make the decision? I mean, it's a, if it was a-
It was the selectmen that signed the lease.
On somebody's private property, it would be to the homeowner, the property owner to address those issues, but this is a town-wide.
Correct.
So if we could, yeah, just make him aware of any of those concerns and have him bring that to the Board of Selectmen so they can consider it. Do we have the ability to address the waivers tonight?
Uh, no.
No.
All right, any more questions?
Not at this time. We need a request from the applicant to continue to July tenth.
Yeah, we would need a request from yourself for continuance to July tenth?
Absolutely.
If that's acceptable to you?
We would like a continuance to July tenth, same time, six-thirty?
Yes.
And we'll have all the information you asked for, the new, the new information that isn't on the plans and things you asked for tonight at the next meeting.
Is there any more comments from the public? I entertain a motion for that continuance.
Do we continue to, stated date?
Time?
Time.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm keeping that, you keeping that, too?
No, I can't.
I don't see why not.
Okay, moving on to our next public hearing.
It's all secret. Don't listen to him.
He's mean.
So we'll move on to our next public hearing. Three-eighty through four-hundred Electric Avenue, application for a car wash from Daniel and Jean Proctor. Would you mind reading the-
He's getting shorter by the minute, buddy.
Is this one, is it? This is it?
Should be, yeah.
Another cell tower. Here we go. Protective site plan approval. This is, sorry, one.
Six-thirty-five.
Mobile vacuum center, yes. So. Are we good?
Go ahead.
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June twelfth, twenty-seventeen, six-thirty-five Joseph Blotter Meeting Room, Town Hall, seventeen Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and discuss an application for site plan approval under section eight-point-four of the protective bylaw of Town of Lunenburg for construction and operation of a self-service car wash and associated automobile vacuum centers at three-eighty to four-hundred Electric Avenue, map ninety-eight, parcels one-six-six and one-six-eight. Owners applicants are Daniel, Daniel and Jean Proctor, fifteen-twenty-nine Mass Ave, Lunenburg, Mass. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office, nine-sixty Mass Ave, Lunenburg, Mass, zero-one-four-six-two.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name's Greg Roy with Ducharme and Dillis and as you mentioned, I'm representing Dan and Jean Proctor. I'm gonna give you a quick history of where we've come over the past winter, late winter and spring that's led us to this point and then I'll walk you through the, the site that we're proposing. The use requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, so that was sort of stop one for us. We went to, we went to the zoning board of appeals in February or March, I can't remember. And they issued our use permit. At the time, we were proposing a three-bay car wash. We have since modified that to a two-bay car wash, so I'll get into that when I introduce the plans. We are working within resource, buffer zones to resource areas that are regulated by the wetlands- They gave us a straw vote, actually, that we could...they could not close the hearing because the DEP had not issued their file number yet, but they wanted to communicate to your board. I don't know if they did that through Adam or not, but they wanted to communicate that they didn't have any plan changes that they wanted to see. And I'll walk through some of those issues as I go through the process. And then we also are proposing a sewer connection, a connection to the sewer system. Again, I'll go over that when I get to the utilities plan. But we will be before the sewer commission tomorrow night to talk...start talking about some of those...that process as well. As you mentioned in the...in the advertisement, we're at 380 to 400 Electric Ave. 380 is the northernmost chunk of land, I'll call it. 390 is the existing red building, the office, right in here. And 400 is the existing store. The water feature fountain is right out in there. I put this in perspective on the area, it's maybe a little bit difficult for you to see, but you can see down here would be the Whalen intersection with the package store and the two automotive garages down here. This is the Unitil building right up in there, so that kind of puts you in perspective of where we're at. This whole area right in here is wetland, right up to the property line, and that'll show up a little clearer when I get to the site plans, which I'm gonna do now. I think I have enough wire. This is the existing conditions. I'll go over this really quickly. The site is mostly disturbed. I would say 99% disturbed. I've highlighted the areas in gray here which are paved. This is the existing material storage bin, a shed roof where they store the, you know, loam, stone, and those kind of earth and products. This building right here is the existing office, the red building right there. And all of this area highlighted and colored in brown is sort of a gravelled area. Historically, it's been paved, hasn't been repaved in a long time, so it's more like a compacted gravel. You're probably familiar with the site, but it's used...there's a lot of material storage piles, and the use of those piles sort of changed. But back in here would be where you have the block storage, the bricks and the pavers and all those things are right back in there. There's some more storage bins out in the back where some more materials are stored. And just for your interest, there's a perennial stream off-site with an associated riverfront area, that's one of the reasons why we had to go to conservation commission, as well as the wetland system that's right on the prop...pretty much right on the property line with the associated buffer zone that...
That's where the buses are parked currently.
Yeah, thank you. That's great. So the buses are parked right in here, in the front of the site, and we're gonna be shifting that as part of this proposal as well. I'll get to that next. criteria, I think it's 10 criteria, that the zoning board has to find in order to issue the special permit. One of them is that we are required to have an in, a separate in and a separate out for a car wash use, so we've designed the site in that manner. As you pointed out, the car wash building is going right in the same area that the current bus parking area is. We're proposing to relocate those to the back of the site, right in this area here. Another thing that we're doing on the site, just from a sort of...one of the things Dan and Jean really want to do is to, well, I'll just use the word, clean up the site a little bit, so make this a little bit more aesthetically pleasing. Certainly when we have a car wash use here, people are coming in, and the reason they're there is to get a clean...to come out with a clean car. So one of the things, one of the things that we've worked in the site plan is a consolidation of the curb cuts. It's pretty much one entire curb cut across the frontage at the moment. So we're gonna be peeling that back and consolidating the entrance right in that area for access of the buses and access for the rest of the yard operation site. So we'll be separating those two entrance and exit features. The plan that I've marked up here shows you, in green will be the areas where we're proposing to restore. We'll go from a gravelled, compacted surface or a paved surface to a grass surface. The area adjacent to the northerly property line is actually gonna be restored with some wetland buffer zone type plantings to bring that back to a more naturalized state after we're done with the work. The car wash itself has room for north of 10 vehicles per bay to stack on this onsite without impacting the traffic flows on Electric Avenue, which in our experience, doing car washes around the area, a 10-car queue is probably an hour wait. So, you know, that tends to be more than adequate. So we have that queuing space, but we also have designed this with an escape lane so that if people come in and see five cars stacked up, they can bypass and go and exit the wash without having to get stuck in line. The drainage...I'm trying to do everything on this sheet, so I don't have to walk back over there. The drainage, we've improved the drainage characteristics. I think that's one of the things the conservation commission appreciated about the design. The drainage is basically from south to north. It runs generally towards the wetland system. And we've maintained that drainage flow, but where we had no treatment before, we've included some detention basin with some swales along the lower side or the northerly side of the proposed parking areas that'll collect the runoff and treat them before they get discharged to the wetland areas. The pavement area and a lot of the roof area in this, in the back of the car wash will be collected to an underground infiltration area. We're kind of doing the best we can. The soils down there are pretty bad for infiltration. They're Class D soil, C or D soil. So the infiltration that we're gonna get from that is pretty minimal, but it is one of the things you need to do for the...when you're looking at stormwater management, the 10 standards of the stormwater management policy. So we've included that in the design as well. Along the front, where the exit apron would be, and all the vehicles from the wash would be exiting in this spot, we've included a trench drain. I'm gonna come right over here and show you, because I can't hold this straight. Right inside the property line, we're proposing a slot drain, a trench drain to make sure we capture water prior to being discharged onto the right-of-way, the street right-of-way. The...so, you know, the project we're here before you is really primarily for the car wash, but also, as I mentioned, includes a relocation of the bus parking. So that would be in this back area, right here in this sort of darker shaded area. We've accommodated a 120-foot-long spot, so we've accommodated 12 feet per bus. I think it's 40 feet deep, which is, I think, a little bit more than they're using now, so we tried to be...give them a healthy amount of parking. But that'll consolidate that use to that portion of the site, moves it away from the wetlands. I think that helps the conservation commission like that. That would still be a gravelled surface, so we're proposing not to pave out there, but just to maintain the gravelled surface treatment. This is a proposed utility plan, so this is sheet. If you're following along, sorry, I'm not doing a very good job here of keeping you guys caught up. If you're following along, C 4.0 is the utility plan. And we are proposing a, obviously, electrical connection, water connection, gas connection, and a sewer connection. So I've tried to highlight these, but it's a little difficult to see. The water, gas and water would be right in this area here. There's already an existing water service that goes to the office building, so we would be rerouting that. I guess I didn't mention either. We're proposing to relocate the office building onsite. So that office building is a fairly new structure. It's on a foundation. We're proposing to move that structure, keep that structure in place, but just move it to a slightly different location, as shown on the proposed site plans. So we'd have some utility changes to accommodate that with the water. Also, the electrical would come across the front of the car wash site to the office building and the electrical connection that would come into the car wash right in the same, on the northerly side where the mechanical room would be for the wash. And then we'll have some electrical lines going out to the light poles. I'll get to lighting in a few minutes. And then the sewer connection, there's an existing easement. The public sewer and lift station is actually in an easement on the Proctor's property. There's a existing sewer service that provides service to the existing office building. We've talked to Jack Rodiquins, the DPW, about the appropriate way to connect to the sewer for the car wash, and it was determined that using that existing sewer line would be the best way because the sewer down here is really deep and we're in a groundwater table situation. So he didn't like the prospects of excavating that up and putting another Y in there, connection. So this was the preferred alternative. Like I said, we're going to the sewer commission tomorrow, so we'll be discussing, talking through any issues that they might have with that. And the gas service is the line, and maybe it's constructed by now, I don't know, Dan, is that done, or the gas?
Yeah, it's done. I'll show if it's locked.
Yeah. So the gas has been extended, or is being extended, for the Unitil project, so we propose to tie into that line for the car wash project. I don't have any color on this, and I apologize for that, but this will get you into a little bit of the traffic circulation that we...how we designed this. This is C 2.0. We're proposing to stripe on the backside, so the whole back would be paved, but we'd be striping to make sure we get the traffic patterns correct on the lot, to make sure that we preserve our queuing lengths and traffic flow patterns through the site. There's four parking bays in the back. Two of them would be vacuum spaces. We're only allowed two vacuum spaces by our special permit. We're limited to...we're limited in terms...by the total number of wash bays that we have by the special permit. So the other two would be parking for either employees or we may have a...there's gonna be some vending machines here for shampoo, other things that you might expect to get at a car wash. So there'd be places for patrons to park there and use those services. The entrance and exit have concrete pads. So on the entrance side, you have an 18- to 20-foot concrete pad that's typically heated to make sure we don't have any icing problems with the right immediately as you're entering the wash. And it also keeps the snow plows away from the building, so you don't have to worry about that. There'll be automatic teller machines where...at that...in that concrete pad where you would pay for and select what the wash that you'd be choosing. And then the exit side, again, another small concrete heated pad typically, and then the vehicles would exit and exit out onto Electric Ave. We have a two-lane exit, 24 feet wide, as your bylaw allows, on the exit side, and we're exit-only, so we've dedicated a separate lane for each direction. And then again, this just shows you a little bit where the bus parking would be. Also, there's...excuse me. We've also shown the snow storage on this plan, so a big issue with the conservation commission would be to get the snow storage away from the wetlands, so this plan achieves that. We have snow storage over in this area, a little bit out front for this pad in the front, and then we'd be proposing it away from the wetland areas in the back in this location there for the bus storage area. Two more, and then I'll stop talking. This is our landscaping plan, landscaping and lighting plan. We've, as I mentioned earlier, we're proposing a restoration of the 30-foot no-touch zone, which is a conservation commission regulation. That area is disturbed now, so we're gonna be bringing that back to more of a naturalized buffer. One of the things we heard in the CBA process from the abutters along the back street was shielding from both the bus, the relocated bus parking area, and also the...any lighting that we're gonna have on the site. So we took those into account. And one of the things that we mentioned in that process was to add some dense screening on the top of that, those existing storage bins. So, Danny, you'll probably correct me here, but the grade down here is about three to four feet lower than right up here. And then there's a pretty good, you know, there's some materials up in here that create a pretty good burn there. So we're proposing to plant those evergreen trees on top of that wall where the existing storage bins are. We would be keeping that wall in place. So we'd have a four-foot, maybe a three and a half, I'm not sure exactly what the blocks are there, three, four feet. And then you'd have another, you know, a planting height of six feet, so we'd...right out of the gate, we'd have about a 10-foot buffer there from the car wash. Of course, when the trees grow, it would get denser and taller. And then we wanted to make sure...we needed to make sure that the lights weren't shining directly at those abutters. So we're proposing one light right there, which is...which would be for the bus parking. It will be directed to the south with a shielded fixture. We're proposing another same light right there, directed towards the car wash building, so we would not be directing any light that way, which is where the primary concern...the concern for the spillage for the abutters was. And then we're proposing wall pack lights on the building, which would be a down, you know, shielded wall pack light right over the garage bays. And those would be primarily for illuminating the back of the parking and the front of the parking on the exit side of the wash facility. One thing we did not provide you, which was in the peer review comment, was a photometrics plan that showed foot candles. And I'm gonna go over the peer review comments in a minute, but I...this plan, which I didn't get the comments in time to get you back the revised plan, so I do apologize for that. But the next set of plans that you will get already have that photometric information on there. I've highlighted in yellow here, so you can see where the yellow stops is the .1-foot candle mark. So that's where you just about have no light measurement at the surface. So we have no spillage off-site with the exception of on the Electric Ave side. And really, there's no spillage of .5-foot candles on the Electric Ave side either. So we think that we...we think the lighting achieves the objectives. I wanted to go through the peer review comments, if that is acceptable to you. And like I said, I received those last Wednesday, which is...I'm not...which is great. We filed on the last filing deadline, so I didn't expect to get them before Wednesday. So we went right to work making the edits, and we have most of them done. I just didn't want to be presumptuous and submit a set of plans to you because I know you liked them a week ahead of time. So I wanted to give you sort of a progress report on those. There's a few that I'd like to talk about, and there may be a few that you want to talk about. So if it's acceptable, I'll just...I'll go through those.
There's no objections from the rest of the board?
No.
Go right ahead.
I also have a draft response letter that I'm gonna be talking off of. If it helps you folks, I'll give it to you. If not, I'll hold it. If not, I'll hold it. Up to you.
You need it?
I'm happy to.
Extra copy?
I have, I brought six copies, just in case. Okay, hang on.
Do you have one for our review engineer, since he's here?
Sure. Oh, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. So we got the review comments, and I'd just like to go through them. And I'll just kind of go through them one by one. But like I said, most of these, and feel free if you want to chime in, Jeff. That's, that. Number one, the proposed relocated office building parking. A parking space width of 8.5 was utilized on the plans. This would be acceptable for compact cars. However, for lots with 20 or fewer spaces, compact car spaces are not permitted. So he recommended a width of nine. We've already made that change, so that's no problem. Number two, gets at the site distances. We did not measure the site distances on the site from the proposed exit, entrance/exit. We're happy to do that. It's a pretty clear shot there, but we're certainly happy to add those to the plan. So that's no problem either. Stop me if you have anything to add. The existing conditions plan needs to be stamped by a Land Surveyor, no problem. The datum needs to refer to NAVD 88 and, and the Mass State Plane. We actually have that already in the plans. It was just a little bit confusing. So we'll make sure that's cleared up in the notes on the plan, so I apologize for that Ownership and street addresses for the abutters on the lots to the south and west of the site, we're missing, so we've had, we've added those in the, again, yeah, I'm asking you to take my word for it. So we'll be submitting plans with all these things, but I just wanted to let you know it's sort of a status update where we've come with these. Existing structures within 200 feet of the property line need to be shown, so we'll accommodate those on the plans. A limit of work, a proposed, proposed tree line was not shown. So we'll clear that up as well on our landscaping plan. Photometric plan, photometric plan was not submitted. Of concern is the extent and intensity of the lighting around the car wash building. So I've showed you the sketch. Of course, you don't have that in your packet, but we'll have the foot candle readings right on the landscape plan on the next, on the next round. And you'll see that, with the exception of, as I mentioned, the electric half pavement, there's no place where there's a greater than a .2-foot candle reading offsite. On the electric half side, there's one point where I think it's .5, but even a .5-foot candle, a pretty small reading. So, and nothing in the critical areas to the west where we have the, the concern with the abutters. Architectural plans and floor plans stamped by Register Architect were not submitted to our office. So I'd like to take a quick minute and show you those, and again, hand them out if it's acceptable to you. I apologize for those not being in your packet. We had a three-bay wash that we were working with at CBA, and we just didn't get you the two bays. So I have those, if that's acceptable to the board, I can get those to you. So this is designed by Beyond Basics, who's a local designer, architectural designer. And it's, we have a, it's going to be a wood frame building with, with two bays, as we, as we mentioned, two bays. The first sheet in your packet has the front and rear elevations. We're, what's the right word? Nostalgically calling it Whalen Wash, or lovingly calling it Whalen Wash, that's the proposal. And we're proposing, you know, some architectural details there with a coupla, you know, a clipped, you know, sort of hip roof type system. You know, it's a pretty straightforward building. The side elevations are on the second sheet, and I think I included the floor plans on the, which are pretty basic. So it's a concrete foundation with slab. The northernmost bay would be where all the equipment is that runs the wash. And, and then you'd have the two bays.
Can I just ask a little quick question?
Absolutely.
Is this, are you going to be in control of the washing mechanisms, or is it a mechanical system that does it?
Totally mechanical.
So you just drive in, you get washed, you drive out? Excellent. Okay, thank you.
If you've, we're doing at least one PDQ system, is that what you're, a laser, a laser wa, one PDQ laser wash type system? Two, two of those, yeah. So if you've been to the washing air on the air rotary, it's going to be probably a decade newer in equipment, but it's going to be a very similar experience to that. Or, you know, you pick your own wash, you drive in, you get instructions, you know, visual cues on when to stop, and then the equipment kind of goes around the, the car wash, sizes the car up. And, you know, the soaps and the washes are administered, and then you drive out. So it's pretty, it's pretty automated. So that's a basic line of the architecturals. It's not a, it's not a real big building by any stretch of the imagination. So I just, I wanted to make sure you, you had a copy of those. Item number 10 in the review letter just indicates that our hydrology calculations were generally in order. Compliance for the Mass DP Stormwater Handbook and Stormwater Standards is reasonable, except as noted in the following comment. The project is considered redevelopment. Peak rates of runoff are being attenuated. Groundwater recharge is proposed where none exist, and best management practices are proposed to improve stormwater quality. So no comment there. 12 refers to the, the stormwater basin that we have on the northerly property line. We only had a, we had a very small amount of freeboard, what we call freeboard, where you calculate your maximum water surface elevation, and you like to have a foot from that, that elevation to the top of your berm. We only had .2 feet, so we're pushing the limit there a little bit. We've already corrected that problem, so we've adjusted the plans accordingly. The access for emergency maintenance or deliveries is short at only 18, 18 feet in depth. A delivery or maintenance vehicle may protrude in the side driveway. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but I think you're referring to this area right there?
That is right.
Yeah, okay. So we've, we added that there. We actually were exploring some other options for some of these bays here, the park, the bays for vacuuming, whether we could fit those in there. We just, we just can't fit them there very effectively, so. But there's going to be an ATM machine there where you can get your own shampoos and those kind of things. You can, you know, like a, like you would a Coke. You know, you could just pick it, and it'll, it'll come out of the machine. So that, that's what that access would be for. Any equipment servicing would be in that, that large, we'd be parking maintenance vehicles in that striped island in the back, adjacent to the mechanical bay. So we wouldn't be parking large vehicles, and we don't anticipate that. We just thought it would make it a little bit easier for access if someone needed to come in there and load up that, that ATM machine. Although I think, honestly, I think that's probably going to be up from the inside of the building, maybe. So we just thought that, you know, we'd, we'd have some access there, just in the event that we needed to get there, but it's not really critical for our maintenance activities. So I just wanted to be clear on that. 14, a radius dimension is missing for the curb line, no problem. 15 is a labeling issue for DP3, so that's no problem. We've corrected that. 16 is a comment relative to our standard drain manhole detail. The comment would be to form an invert channel in the bottom of that, so we, that's perfectly acceptable, we can do that. A stabilized construction entrance for the erosion control plan, to be, to be included on the erosion control plan. That's no problem. The, the good news is the site's pretty stable now. You know, this, and there's large trucks going in and out of there now with no erosion. So we have a pretty good baseline of operation there from a, because it's used for, for those types of operations currently. Sheet C2, thickness of the driveway is base asphalt. So this is a discrepancy between some details, so we will clear that up. Typographical error on, for the, so labeling thing, no problem. And 20 is to include a construction detail for the stormwater basin, which is no problem. We'll, we'll do a cross-section, aligning that in the revised plan set. So I really didn't have, I, ordinarily, I might, I might hold off. We've really and truly made all those changes that I've, that I've said, with the exception that I need to go out and measure the site distances on my way down to the office tomorrow. But, but other than that, I wanted to sort of give you a status update. There wasn't anything that I really needed a lot of input from your board on. It just seemed like a pretty cut and dry. Most of the comments were pretty cut and dry. I didn't think you'd disagree with many of them, but if you do, please let me know, and we'll back some off. But I am interested to hear any comments that you might have, and answer any of your questions, or any questions that the audience may have. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll open it up, the comments from the board?
I have a question about the, the review comment 11 and 12. This is redevelopment, so the compliance, strict compliance with stormwater is not required. So the less than two-foot groundwater separation from infiltration is, is acceptable?
Very good question. What I'd look at redevelopment and not, is if they're proposing an infiltration facility, they do in fact have the two-foot offset to groundwater. By the soil testing that they did on the site and the information they presented, yes, they do have the two-foot offset to groundwater. So to answer your question, Matt, even if an applicant has a redevelopment project, and they say, "Yeah, I don't have to provide infiltration," that's true. But when I review plans, if they're proposing infiltration, I do look for that two-foot offset to groundwater to make sure that it's satisfied, redevelopment or not. And they did provide it.
So you ran the numbers and you, and you, because the test pit out front was four feet at groundwater, but the, the two that are closest to the infiltration are 42-inch depth?
Yeah, I ran the numbers based on the existing conditions. If I remember right, the site's coming up a little bit.
Okay.
And, and.
Okay, so finished grade is higher than existing?
You got it. You got it.
Gotcha.
And I do compare against existing conditions, yep.
Excellent.
Quite frankly, from a stormwater perspective, where it's a gravel surface, it's basically functioning as impervious, we get a gray area with engineers debating, well, does it have to be bituminous or concrete surface, or is it packed gravel surface impervious? Depends on who you talk to, but, but I took this to be basically an impervious site, not all that different than the Unitile site. If I could warm up here, I'll talk about a couple of things. First of all, stormwater, I'm very happy with the design. It's, it's an improvement. They use a low-impact development, which is a buzzword. I'm an engineer, I like nuts and bolts, but they don't have the elevation, the elevation changes that they can go with like a deep-some-catch basin, because you lose too much elevation in that type of system. So this is a very valid system, well-designed, well-thought-out. With respect to lighting, I don't have a problem with a few tents, even a foot candle getting on the electric avenue, by all means, that's what streetlights are for. I just worry about glare. Glare being, it may not show up on the photometrics plan when they, they model the downward projection of light, but if you're driving along and the bulbs actually, you're seeing the bulb, that's the glare that I get worried about. And I was just concerned whether or not there'd be glare out at Electric Avenue. With today's type of lighting, downward lighting is very common. I suspect that that wasn't, was going to be proposed, I just didn't see enough information to, to tell you. Yeah, it's all right. It just, I think, I think they were headed in that direction, but I couldn't say with 100% certainty. And then last thing with respect to that, those two, those two parking spaces over on the entrance side, I don't have a problem with them, as long as it's, it's not going to be, for example, there's, there's a regular maintenance truck that comes in for whatever reason, they drive like a one-ton or longer truck, and they've got to park there and possibly block just a portion of one of the lane coming in. Traffic would go around it, especially with the, with the escape lane. And I did see the painting, painted area in the back where they could use that for larger vehicles. But I just wanted the board to understand that I'm looking at this as black and white as I can. And that it's, you know, 18 feet is not uncommon for a parking space in length. Just got to be careful, the length of the vehicle that actually occupies those spaces. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see the two spots at the entrance that you're referencing.
He just, there.
Was that an addition that's not on these plans? Okay. Thank you.
That's going to be on our plan, on the next set. How's that? With Jeff?
I am. Thank you very much. So traffic's going to be directed just with striping? There's no, those are not textural rumble strips or anything, it's just striping? Okay.
Correct.
How many buses are you currently storing?
Uh, 10, right, 10? Yeah, that's 10. And we're not proposing to change that number.
Yeah, and they're going to be parking basically when they move the buses, is that what's, where do they park their cars now? I'm familiar with the site, it's just...
Yeah, they're probably, we're going to keep their bus, the school bus drivers will pack up here, walk down to their buses.
Okay.
Down below. Yep, just on the other side of those trees that he had proposed.
Right, and on the corner, while you're there, Dan, in the corner of that, where the buses, that, the, the wall there, the retaining wall, are you going to go up? Because I noticed just on the corner, you have one block difference, like from there to the corner is two blocks high from what I saw, and you have like partially three blocks high. Are you going to continue to go up, or are you going to take?
We would basically just continue the same height all the way across.
Okay.
Funny part about those blocks, we need them on a job site, we steal a couple, then when we have a couple more, we bring them back.
Right, I was going to say, if you take them away from the, where the bins were, you could probably.
My store manager yells at me every time we steal a couple.
And after watching the ZBA hearing and the concerns of the abutters, I think that addresses it, that the sound will reverberate off of that more. And I appreciate the fact that you added the shrubs. And the fence, the existing fence will remain? And according to some of our comments from Sewer and the Building Commissioner, are the lots are joined now, or are they going to be joined, or?
Yeah, well, that probably, whether they're joined now or not, probably is a legal, a little bit of a legal question. The lots are truly owned in common ownership, so I think that from a zoning standpoint, they're probably already merged. But yes, we're intending to, per the Building Inspector's memo, and we've, we talked about that right from the early stages, we are intending to, to merge those lots, which resolves some potential zoning problems with the, with the multiple uses, and also the issue surrounding the Sewer Commission's regulation with an, you can't go through an easement to access a building. So if we're, we wouldn't need the easement if we're, we have all one lot, so that's what we, we're proposing to do.
And when you say relocate the existing office building, you're literally going to disassemble it and move it to that spot?
We'll pick it up, and, you know, we'll get a building mover in there and jack it up and move it off the foundation and put it on the new one.
They look to be different sizes?
Yeah, they look to be different sizes.
They are. And the reason for, there's a shed off the back, so there's a, yeah, the, the main- Yeah, the, the main office building is what, twenty-four by thirty-six? So that's the only building that we'd be moving, the, the...
Shed's going to...
The shed, the shed would not stay, it would just wouldn't, it'd just, yeah, just be removed, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, that shows on this sheet, okay.
Do our rules and regs require an actual drawing for that, technically?
You know, it looks like it's onsite.
A picture would suffice, if they already have the building.
It, it's not, it's not an unknown quantity, where, as a new building, no.
It's going to be orientated about the same way, I mean, the gable end's still going to be facing the road, it's just going to be, we're going to actually clean it up a little, square it off, but it's, currently it's, it's skewed with the, with the existing property line, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit funny when you look at the, the rest of the site, so we'll be kind of squaring that off a little bit.
Uh, this is a bit of a technical question, but in approv... In approving this plan, are we also approving the relocated building with its attendant parking?
Yes, you are.
My understanding in conversations I've had with the applicant and maybe one or two conversations with their engineer is, this is a comprehensive plan of the combined sites.
Okay.
That, in all likelihood, would be constructed in phases.
Okay.
Uh, the car wash being the initial phase, the relocation of the building being a second phase to take place at a date yet to be determined within a period of time, you know, sort of yet to be determined, uh, but in, in addressing...
We're giving an approval to that if we...
Correct, correct, and, and it, it's not an uncommon thing for a site like this to get an approval for a larger plan that is conducted in a, in a series of phases, especially whereas, uh, the building that's being moved is currently further from the road and sort of out of the way a little bit, it's, it's shifted back and sort of in line with the, the bins if I'm not mistaken, um, without opening the plans again.
It's that same orientation as the bins, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it's maybe back about fifteen or twenty feet.
Yes, yep.
So, you're not creating a situation where the existing condition interferes with the proposed condition, and then the construction of the car wash allows for the sort of tidying up of...
Yes, but this has parking, whereas the, it did not in the original location, do you know what I'm saying? This is striped parking, this is dedicated parking.
Correct.
A new curb cut.
Well, they're formalizing the curb cut.
Yeah.
But, I mean, there, there's a curb cut there now that's probably about three-hundred-and-fifty feet wide.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, they're, they're creating a safer situation.
Yeah.
Uh, and probably introducing additional stormwater management through the, the planted areas.
Right, we, we actually, we, if I could, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
I, I apologize, um, we actually did include the, most of the paved, that, that paved area around the bin in the, all that stuff flows to the stormwater management system, so that's sort of in the proposed stormwater management program, so, um, although we really focused our design efforts, yes, in consolidating the curb cuts, but really the focus was on the car wash and the bus relocation, and then the other things that needed to happen to make that, uh, work on-site, but the net effect was that, from, at least from a stormwater standpoint, we're actually going to be, you know, improving not just those areas we're focusing on, but also some other areas that we're not touching, so it's sort of a, uh, I think a win-win from, from that standpoint.
So those parking lots will be at nine feet as well, is that what you're saying? In front of the office building?
Those... Yeah, actually, those are the ones I think that Mr. Walsh was referring them to, yeah, the, the ones in the back, uh, where the vacuums would be, those are actually twelve feet wide, so people can have their doors open, you know, and, and vacuum.
I couldn't find that measurement.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, there it is, okay, I see it now. And what is, if I could just get you to come here for a second?
Sure.
What is this? This is going to squawk.
It's a pen mark.
Snow storage area.
Okay, thank you.
Unlabeled snow storage.
Unlabeled, got it.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Are you proposing to pave the shaded area around the bins, or is that...
That's actually already paved, I mean, it's rough, but it's paved, you know, it's, 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 you could, you can clearly see that's where the asphalt is, and it's, it might be a little less of a defined edge than my plan is depicting it, but, uh, it's, it's paved around there.
But basically you'd be paving like where the new parking area is, or is that going to be just...
Yeah, so, right, so...
Be adding some new pavement to that?
Yeah, uh, right, um, the, the limit of work is actually, let me see if I can pull up better plan up here. Uh, boy, they just don't have it. I don't think I have the right plan mounted on the board, but, um, but the limit of work, we're going to probably need to remove the asphalt like up to the building and then in there, and then re, any, any existing asphalt that would, the asphalt actually kind of comes down like this, so we'd be removing that and redoing this, because the grades have to change slightly, so, and it will be matching back in, all this would, would remain existing in there, so, obviously, there's pavement in here too that we'd be removing, you know, so, um, to accommodate that green space. And, and just, just, um, one other comment, so, the existing offices, as you, as you, as Adam mentioned, is further back and, and slightly rotated, the parking for that right now is right out in the front of it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they pretty much park right in there, and, so now we'll be accommodating that right in the, on the opposite side of the building.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever been there in the winter, what do you do with, uh, the snow storage in the winter? Do you guys pile out in the winter? You do?
The, yep, um...
I think I've only ever been in the summer.
So typically now, we, you know, everything, the buses are packed here, we come across in front of the buses, this is kind of the snow storage area.
In the regular yard, do you guys usually?
Yeah, basically everything just ends up in a pile right here.
Okay.
Through the, through the chair, I don't know if you want to talk about signage on the building, I know I've had a conversation with the applicant, and I, I know it's sort of a moving target, but it's probably better to start that conversation now.
Yeah, you mean the building sign, like the pre-standing sign?
Yeah, the directional inconvenience signage, uh, that would go along with it, not the, the advertising signage.
Oh, okay. Do you want to talk about that, Bruce? The directional, or is that not near? What do you want to talk about? Okay.
Just by way of information before we get too deep into all the...
Yeah, I guess our biggest thing, you know, between Gene and myself is what's allowable on the building itself as part of the customers knowing which way to go, what's going to happen, that type of thing. I would like to get Bruce Everett up here, he's from New England Car Wash, uh, obviously our representative, uh, you know, in the sales department, the big thing is, is for customers to know where to go, okay, you know, one wash is going to be a touch free, the other one's going to be a friction, you know, that type of thing, so we do want to talk about what we are allowed to have on the building for that type of signage. Bruce?
Good evening, do you have any specific questions on signs?
Uh, no, I, I guess, I, I more want to make the board aware of, of kind of where we're at and what the conversation, uh, that, that Gene Proctor and the building inspector and I had today regarding some of the, the, the convenience and directional signage on the building, so what we have in front of us is a fairly Spartan sign plan.
Right.
It's the building as it would exist, uh, and there's a series of signs that one generally associates with the car wash, you know, identifying which bay is which wash, identifying where the vacuums are, uh, including the, uh, the teller machines and the, uh, the price listing or price menu, I don't, you know, what nomenclature you folks use, and in the sign by law under six-five-one-six-A-three, um, there's other signs limited to directional signs necessary for public safety or convenience be designated and approved as an integral part of development plan, which is now site plan, as approved by the planning board, so, as we go forward with this, this is a distinctive use that unlike a lot of other, uh, uses that, that this board approves, has a variety of signs associated with convenience and direction that, uh, is probably more extensive than you would find on a standard retail store, uh, and I think that between now and, and when the project comes back, there would be a, a mock-up of, of what their proposal would be, and, and I just sort of want to plant the seed in the board's head going forward that it may be, uh, worth it to be conscious as you drive by other facilities, um, of this nature, and just sort of take in what you see and determine, uh, for yourselves as you move forward, what you feel is appropriate as directional and convenience. Um, again, it's a, it's a distinctive use, and there's, the site is laid out in a manner that requires movement in, in very specific ways, uh, and you want to be sure going forward that as you make a determination on that signage, it's balancing, moving people through the site appropriately and, uh, the aesthetic concerns that, that evolve sort of voiced, and I think, from what I saw, I, I think that there's a decent balance proposed, uh, what we saw was a, uh, I think a pre-mockup, so I, I, I can't say too much what I, you know, what my interpretation of what they've sort of proposed would be, but I, I think it's something that's going to come forward and going to come back, and, um, rather than be surprised at it the next time around, I'd, I'd encourage you to just be mindful, uh, in the two, two or four weeks between now and then.
But we will see something, correct? You will...
You would have to.
I will work with you guys for signage, just as far as what the menus will look like, typically, um, this is the entrance side here of the wash, there's a menu sign on each side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, typically five feet high by three feet wide, and a lot of times back illuminated, um, it can be either, uh, mounted with a post to the ground, to the pad, or right to the building, um, and where on the plan that the customers will start to separate into the two lines, I typically see operators, um, with a sign in the middle that'll point touch-free and then right-touch it with an arrow, so that the customers, before they get into the specific line, they know which one they're picking. Um, and I assume that the directional arrows will be all of it, you know, the, all that's necessary for traffic pattern, I'm, I'm not an expert on that, but, um, as far as signage goes, just the menu signs, it shows the different wash packages, um, which I think we're going to have four, and those are mounted usually on the driver's side, uh, of the doorway, so we're on this left-hand side here.
Okay, so can I, can, oh, sorry.
All right, Ed.
Can I, let's just go through this real quick with me, you drive up, you get out of your car, you go, you pay...
You don't get out of your car.
You don't get out of your car?
Yeah, no, there's going to be out here, about twelve feet off the building, there's going to be an automated teller.
Mm-hmm.
And there's actually some signage on that too, there's a sign topper that will probably have the menu on that too, um, so you just pull up to the teller and you do your transaction, and once it's satisfied, the door will lift, and that sign will tell you to drive in.
Okay, so what is, what am I seeing there with the ATM then, and someone out of their car standing there?
If you're not actually seeing it, it's not dr, it's not drawn.
No, but on the left there, you see it on the left?
Oh, okay.
You see the person standing there, and then...
I believe that's the shampoo. That's, that's the vending machine and bill changer.
Okay, so you get the bill changer, and then...
A vending machine for products.
Oh, you just select it?
Yeah, like...
And then you go and...
Oh, no, it's just for, after the wash process is done.
Yeah.
They sell, they'll sell like Armor All packets.
Oh, okay.
And shield wash.
Accessory stuff, you can do yourselves.
Right, right.
Okay, got it, thank you. All right. So you have this, um, you drive up to this little miniature kiosk thing, make your options, you drive right in.
Correct.
After you paid.
Yep.
And says, "Yep, you're good, okay." Any signs inside telling you, like, you see?
There are lit signs, um, that'll say, "Drive forward."
Yeah.
And then when you're in the right spot, it turns to a red X.
Okay.
Inside and beeps at the, for the customer.
Okay.
So they can hear it.
So it's visual and beeping, how loud is that, we know how loud the beeping is?
Uh, it's adjustable.
Not when the doors, when the doors are open and they're exiting, is there any beeping going on?
Uh, no, there's a, a voice on the sign, a, a female voice that says, "Drive forward."
Okay.
Please drive forward.
Okay, thank you.
So Adam and I met today.
Sorry if you could just...
Oh, my name's Gene Proctor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Adam and I met today, there's, um, because the vacuums are located in the back of the building, they're not visible as you're driving in, so we talked about, um, having a sign on the right-hand side as you're coming in, notifying people that there are vacuums to the rear of the building, otherwise they won't see them. Um, some people may opt to just go and vacuum your car out, and if they don't know that they're there, then we won't get that business, so we, we spoke about that, um, Adam and I spoke also about a sign, um, for the entrance area and for the exit area as well. And we also talked about the, right on the front of the building, whether, we're just a, we just want to make sure that the, the, for safety sake, the traffic patterns is going to the back of the building.
Yeah.
And then entering the car wash and exiting properly, so we, we also spoke of making sure that that was very clear, that the exit, or the entrance is not at the beginning or the front of the building, it's at the back. And we actually also talked about the two types of washes, uh, all the, I believe, Bruce, all the local car washers, or ones that we've visited, will actually label the types of washes above the bays in the front, so as you're coming in, you, you will know, it'll, it'll actually cue you to which lane you want to be in, um, in addition to some signage in, in the back as well, um, just to, if there's a line of cars and they want one, they prefer one car wash over the other, they want to make sure that they're in the correct line.
Do you anticipate putting exit on the doors, on the front of the doors, like? Is that...
I see a lot of operators who put exit only on the doors.
Okay.
We talked about having them on the doors themselves.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, um, the doors, will they, so they'll be down when there's a car inside?
It's however you want to, you can operate the doors, um, any way, like, they can stay open in the summer, you can have them come down with every car, you can have them, um, stay open.
Right, so if we had an exit only on the door itself, that may not be down and may not be seen, so we want to make sure that somewhere clearly on the front of the building, it'll say, "Exit only."
Okay. So just to review though, we will get some sort of...
I was going to say, I think, I think seeing it on paper is going to, but I, I think that she, Gene's just trying to give you an idea of...
Yeah, sure.
The magnitude of what they're...
Thank you, Gene.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question for Adam, um, would the vacuum be considered an accessory use to a car wash?
No, it's actually part of the definition of car wash.
Okay, so then there wouldn't be an accessory use sign available option?
Well, our sign, our physics formula that, that is cloaked as a, as a sign by law, um, I, I don't think necessarily speaks to accessory uses, um, there's a primary sign and depending on whether you fall into a single use or a multiple use with multiple buildings, or multiple use with single buildings, or directional sign, it, it's kind of complicated, um, but I, I think what we've talked about and, and the mock-up, the pre-mock-up that sort of we looked at today is geared entirely towards convenience and safety, uh, with the exception of, of obviously the well and wash sign on, on the eve, and that's, that's allowed per the bylaw, uh, and then, you know, we get into the primary... And then, you know, we get into the primary freestanding sign and all that fun stuff. But I think that's a conversation that can come a little bit further down the line.
If I could?
Please go ahead.
The, so loud and clear, we'll make sure that we have a much more complete and robust sign package that includes all the wash instructional signs. I did want to talk about the freestanding sign if I could, Adam. And also, before I forget, I think we do include on our layout plan, exit only facing the street, you know, exit only and entrance only, sort of directional signs, so that it's clear that people on electric ab know which side to go.
They're about two square feet down by the driveway.
Yeah, right. But anyway, the freestanding sign, this is a little bit of a unique site in that the right-of-way line is about 20 feet back from the road pavement. And then your bylaw, I think, requires the freestanding sign to be 20 feet back from the right-of-way line. So if we put the freestanding sign 20 feet back from the right-of-way line, it's like, you know, why bother, almost why bother putting it on? Because it's 40 feet away from the pavement sign. So we, Adam and I and the building inspector had an email exchange just so I could interpret the section of the sign by law correctly. I had placed it on the plan in a position where it would be compliant. And then final plan revisions prior to submitting it into your office, we actually show it shifted closer to the property line, which would require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. So I think that our strategy here would be that, obviously, you can't approve a sign that would require a variance, so as part of the site plan process. So I think what we would be doing on the freestanding side would be to show it in a compliant position on the revised plans. And then if we, if Dan and Jean decide to, we may approach that with the zoning board of appeals in the future. That's not one of those things that's critical to getting it built, so we may just let that issue kind of work its way out later. But that's why it's shown, that's the history on why it's shown where it is. So we have some more thinking to do there, too.
Through the chair, I'll also remind the board that in the past, the board has approved site plans, sans freestanding sign, with the understanding that when the applicant makes a final determination on either the content, structure, or location of the sign, they can come back and do a plan amendment just for the sign location. You know, if you have a compliant location, I guess the process kind of is the same. It's just a plan amendment, whether you're putting a sign that wasn't there or moving one that exists. But that option is something that the board has entertained previously.
Is there going to be air compressor?
Yes.
And that's over by the vacuums? For tire fill-up?
Yes.
Just a minor thing in your sign schedule for S2. Your legend says "Enter Only," which should be "Exit Only."
Oh, okay, thank you.
Just another typo. And just for clarity, the directional arrows shown in the pavement are intended to be painted?
Yes.
Are you guys all set for a moment? I'll open it up to public comment if you're ready.
Sure.
Is there any public comment from the public?
Mr. Chairman, member of the board. I was in attendance when the applicants appeared before the zoning board of appeals. And it was interesting to see the interaction between the two parties, so-called, and the way they worked things out. And I left that meeting feeling very good because the abudders voiced their opinions and the applicants voiced theirs, and they worked out a compromise that was agreeable to everybody. So that really pleased me because for the longest time here in Lunenburg, we've been talking about economic development and business development, and what do we have to do? And it's here, it's in front of us. So all we have to do is work with them, as you are, and the various other committees to make sure that this happens. Because I think it's a good project, it's in a good location, and it makes a lot of sense in terms of a whole host of things. I'm not going to hit each and every one of them. The other thing that I'd like to say is, and I hope I don't embarrass Dan, but he runs a very, very good operation. It's clean, it's neat. When you go by, you know it's a business and you know it's a successful business and you know that it's done right. The design of this building, I'm sure, was not Dan's idea. It's Jean's idea. Because although Dan is very good, he's not the brains, the outfit. Okay? And it's really, they've done a nice job and it'll go a long way to add to that area. And I urge this board to act expeditiously to grant this so that we can get them up running. And the people in town that have wanted economic development will get a first taste of that. And it will be done right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah?
Sure.
I caught another thing here. The minimums front setback is 40 feet and your proposed setback is 40.0 feet, which gives no construction tolerance?
Correct.
Okay, just...
I think, sometimes we do that to the overhang, but I'll check.
I don't think we require it to the overhang. I think that...
I think what he's saying is, they do it to the overhang, give them the construction tolerance.
Okay, sure. It looks like you may have done that, yes. And there will be an ASBelt required on this?
There is.
Can you remind me what the reason was for dropping a third bay?
I don't believe the reason was...
A couple of things. First of all, when we talked about the relocation of the red building, when we had the third bay, we couldn't really phase this project out because the third bay was going to get us too close to the red building at its existing location. So we really couldn't build a car wash without moving that red building. That was one of the things. And sometimes when you start a project, you have an idea, but then when the engineer throws it on paper, it just doesn't work. I mean, he was like trying to fit it in different things. Also, talking to the car wash people, the third bay was going to be a self-wash bay that you asked about earlier. And just, you know, through conversations with car wash industry people, the third bays, the self-wash bays, tend to be a lot more maintenance, a lot more headaches, a lot more people standing around, that type of thing. And we just felt like if we were going to, you know, lose one bay, that would be the bay to lose, so that it just fit better without that third bay.
Excellent. Well, I would like to commend you on not digging your heels in and trying to force it in.
And right now, there's a sign on the building, right? That's where your sign is, on the...
That's correct.
On the building, so it'll stay on the building?
That's correct.
Schedule another meeting?
Pardon me?
We're going to schedule another meeting? More questions?
Oh, I just didn't know if you had any questions on the waivers or anything like that? Or do we want to wait until...
I generally suggest you do them all at once. I mean, you can vote on the waivers tonight, but I think that they tend to, it tends to be neater when you vote on the final set of plans in case between now and then, something comes up that they either say, "Oh, we don't need that waiver," or, "Oh, we found this other thing that we need a waiver for" or "would like a waiver for."
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I was just looking for general comments on whether...
I actually, yeah, I checked them out earlier. I don't have any concerns.
I do have a comment about the variance required for the ZBA for the sign. I recall pre-existing projects, instead of applying for variance, they applied for a special permit for dimensional variation?
Yes, that would be...
That could be right.
That would be the setback requirement, yes.
Okay, so that would, because a variance is very difficult to get for new construction.
Correct. Sorry, yeah, I think your terminology is correct.
Well, they're just mincing words, is my understanding, but it's on the books.
Yeah, but you're, I understand where you're coming from, I think you're right.
I think you've done a wonderful job.
So if I could, just on the waivers? There's definitely one that we will not need that we errantly put in the request letter. And it's almost like we're a glutton for punishment because we asked you for it last time for the last project and you didn't give it to us then. So the horizontal datum, I think we asked you for, which we do not need. So we'll be amending it. I can't find my letter now, but I'm pretty sure we had it in there. Here it is. Section 4.0, no. No, no, we didn't have it in there, I'm sorry. I stand corrected. I guess we did pull it out. I apologize.
Yeah, I think it was only referred to in Jeff's letter, I think.
Yeah, I think it was a plan, there's a note on the plans, I think, that is not correct, so we'll make sure those are updated. I thought, I must be seeing things. I thought I, maybe we had an old iteration of this letter and we, I apologize. I'm pleasantly surprised the right one made it into the pack. Sorry about that. So as I mentioned to you before, so does this need a supermajority?
No.
Okay. So we have all the edits minus the site distance done on the plans already. You know, it's a pretty short turnaround for us to do these revisions, a sign plan and things, so we can be ready to go. I don't want to put words in Mr. Walsh's mouth, but I think we can get plans back inside of a couple of days, distributed back down to Mr. Walsh. So I mean, we'll be ready to go from our perspective within two weeks. We can definitely have plans back to you by the beginning of next week to have a meaningful discussion next time, if that's what you so choose. And if you do, we'd be appreciative because it would correspond with our content, what we expect our conservation clause to be, which would be about that same timeframe. So that's it.
Yeah, we received a letter from the wetlands agent today saying they didn't have any issues other than the DEP. Go ahead, David, did you have a comment?
So next meeting?
I guess there's a couple of different factors. If you get information to Jeff this week, if Jeff can turn around, I would even say that due to the limited number of comments, I think if the board got a clean letter the night of the meeting, they have the opportunity to entertain that, per the rules and regs. It says that it's at their pleasure whether they entertain that. And then I would put that to Jeff, that that would give him, you know, a week and a half or so, and again, not to put him on the spot because he's very good about turning stuff around for us.
I'm feeling the pressure. I've been hit with a lot of bombs with short fuses lately, and let me say, they were bombs. This is not. I will turn it around. I will get it to you in time for the meeting. If I, I would appreciate if I could get it this week. There's not much I have to look at. I just am swamped, but I will make it happen. No sense in dragging this on.
And I think the close of business on the 26th should be plenty of time to, because it's all neat and tidy stuff unless the board has a different opinion.
No.
No, I don't. Matthew?
I agree.
Great, okay. Get it done, thank you.
We don't have anything else scheduled for the 26th, other than the joint meeting?
And that might not even be scheduled then.
Okay. When would applications need to be received?
We can talk about that as we get there.
Oh, just one of the questions.
Oh, today's the 12th, it's passed.
Okay.
Unless it's an A&R or something that doesn't require advertisement.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just one other question. These will, I'm assuming, and I hate to assume, are these all going to be downlit fixtures?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cut-off fixtures? Okay, great, thanks.
Can I ask one question? You said A&R and it made me, should I put an A&R plan before you for this, for the law consolidation? Or what is, I think you can take this, you can take the legalities of common ownership a couple of different ways and I think different towns, it's sort of at the preference of the town, I think.
Well, I think, I'll answer this because it's more a technical question. It depends what realm you really want to get into. For zoning, they're one lot because of common ownership. The assessors, for tax purposes, do require the filing of an A&R plan. An 81X won't suffice for combination. And I'm not sure exactly why, but we've had this conversation several times. So it's essentially drawing an 81X and then having the planning board sign it and record it. So I'm going to let the board sort of drive that because from my perspective, you have one lot. You don't have the right to sever off anything except an existing, or a conforming lot.
We'd have to do an A&R, through the A&R process.
Correct, in order to sell any portion.
Correct.
So it's really up to the board what they're comfortable with. If the sewer commission, and I believe they've noted that they feel you're in compliance with their requirements, and they're comfortable with what you've proposed, at that point, is drawing the plan and recording it important to your client?
Okay.
Or the board?
Yeah.
And I'll say to the board that in my understanding, the only problem with that would be side yard setback for buildings. If the lot line remained.
That goes away. Because for zoning purposes, it's one common lot.
Yeah.
Because he owned, they own them in common ownership.
Right.
Same name, same address.
You can only convey them individually if they met current zoning...
Correct.
Right. And they don't. The existing, I shouldn't say they don't, the office building does, but the currently, but the lot where the car wash would go, you can't, it's, first of all, that lot's size is pre-existing non-conforming. It's like we cannot put a new commercial development on a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Correct.
And you can't cite the car wash in compliance with zoning setbacks anyway. So that's sort of why they, you know, why you have to. But yeah, I want to just ask the question. So if it's all the same to you and the sewer commission feels that, that that's a good enough answer for them, that the common ownership deems the lots merged, then it would be your opinion that it would sort of be up to my client whether or not he wanted to go through the expense of the A&R process?
That's my professional perspective. I don't know if the gentlemen who make the decision have a different opinion, which they're certainly entitled to. As long as it doesn't open us up to any problems in the future, I don't see any problem with it.
No, it seems like, you know, it's defaults, you know, if you have to do an A&R to subdivide it, then, you know.
Yeah, I mean...
And they've got their approval on use and they've got...
The Proctors would continue to receive multiple tax bills, but if they're okay with that, that's up to them.
I got two lots.
And you go before sewer tomorrow?
Yeah.
So if they don't have any issues, I don't see an issue.
Okay, great.
If you want to just have them forward that to Adam if they don't have any issues, just so that we're aware of it?
Sure.
I do have one more menial comment and one question. On your sheet C6, erosion control plan, you've got a CAD error. It goes from A to B to D that's overlapping B. So I don't know if C was left out or if it's just re-lettering. You see in the notes and the D labeled...
Okay, in the notes, like it's whatever, it's 3A, 3B, 3C, and then we skip a letter?
Well, it's management strategies, A, maintenance, B, permanent stabilization is D, which is overlapping part of B.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that could be a change. Yeah, I mean, that could be a change order that could cost a little extra money from the contractor.
I gotcha. Well, the contractor's probably gonna be the.
He can change order himself.
From the left pocket to the right pocket.
And then the question is, you're showing a silt sack and a catch basin sediment trap. They're basically doing the same thing?
Two details?
Right, but the silt sack is for the road stuff.
Yeah.
And, and you've, you've.
We usually, I, sometimes I include both of those, because sometimes it's easier to install one than it is the other. I don't know, I, I mean.
But it looks like this, the, the catch basin sediment trap might be in the paved area, so you can't drive the stakes through into.
No, surely, yes, and that's why we would use the silt sacks in those areas. But we sort of, you know, it's a little bit of a.
Is it more expensive?
I can clarify those on the plan, but it's just, we draw the lines around the catch basin, just so we can identify on the plans where we want the silt sacks. They wouldn't, they kind of look like hay bale denotations, but we wouldn't be putting hay bales on the pavement, so. In those cases, we'd want the silt sacks.
Sure.
I can clarify that a little bit for you.
Is that everything?
I think so.
Is there any more public comment from the public? Um, I guess we.
Entertained a request.
Entertained a request for a continuance until our next meeting?
Twenty-six June.
Twenty-sixth of June?
Yeah, would like to make that request. Appreciate you willing, being willing to do that in two weeks.
Sure. So I'd entertain a motion from the board to continue until June 26th.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you on the 26th, thank you. Moving on to minutes approval from May 22nd, 2017. Unless there's any comments from the board?
Nope, no comments.
That way you don't have to sign the draft ones.
What's that? All righty, moving on to committee reports. Stormwater Task Force?
Yes, we met last Thursday, and it was just a membership, and we were reviewing a final draft of minimum control measures to be submitted to our consultants for publication. And I also had to leave early because I had double, double billing with AgCon meeting.
I guess that's a good segue into that?
Good segue right there. At the AgCon meeting, the, the new market manager presented her, what was it, she had a farmer's market report, and we're low on, on actual full vendor, full season vendors. There's only currently three. There are a number of others who are saying that they're going to be there, but there is no formal letter submitted yet, or form. There are applications for anybody who would like to vend. And there was a discussion about the Unifier event coming up, the festival, the recently granted license, entertainment license for the five-day festival at Holman Street. And the agricultural community in general seems very excited about this kind of an event for multiple reasons. It's, it, for one, the, the event managers are looking at purchasing as much of the supplies for the five days as possible from local Lunenburg residents, the local farms. And I have been asked on numerous times, numerous questions about local businesses, and pretty much every single recommendation I've had has been a Lunenburg business, so it will help boost the economy around here for at least that short period, and if nothing more than the first day and the last day, because it is a five-day event. People are coming to stay and then leaving. So that was, that was pretty much the bulk of the AgCon meeting.
Is there any effort to reach out to communities that don't have their own farmer's market, to maybe, that have an AgCon but not a farmer's market?
Interesting. Almost every community around here, most of them have formed an AgCon and have a right to farm. Not all of them, but I believe all of them have a farmer's market. I'm not entirely sure about that statement, but I do also know that this year Shirley has, is not holding their market.
Okay.
And in, in looking at the local market hours and, and goings on, it was determined that the majority of our surrounding towns, we all seem to have a different day for our market. So, it, it has been suggested that, that we try to contact other vendors at other markets that don't vend in Lunenburg, and see if we could get kind of a caravan where if somebody was interested, they could potentially hit a market every day in, in this very small local area.
Okay, and is it still, it's still going to be held at the Ritter Building?
It is going to be held at the Ritter Building. The market manager wanted to have a soft opening because of the low members, subscribership so far for vendors, but it is scheduled to begin the last, the 27th, I believe? June, June 27th?
Is that correct?
I don't know. The last Sunday of the month.
Well, the 27th will be a Tuesday.
Last Sunday of the month is 25.
25th, there you go.
That's okay.
That's it. And it's held in front of the Ritter Building in the center of town. The Ritter Building is the old library, so if you don't know the Ritter Building, you probably wouldn't know that it was the old library. From 10 to 1, I believe. They had extended hours till 2, and I think they're discontinuing that. I'm not entirely sure.
Can I ask you, does anyone know if Stillmans is going to do their thing this year?
The fair?
The fair.
Oh, sure. I don't see any reason why they wouldn't.
When is that coming up?
That was in September, I believe.
Oh, September, okay.
All right, is that it?
Yeah, that's, that's it for me.
All right. Capital planning did not, does not meet. School building committee has not met, and there is no update since our last meeting. Green Communities Task Force has not met. I'm hoping we'll meet soon, because I think we're going to be hopefully trying to identify some new projects. We did get an email, seeing if there would be interest in applying for grant funds to the MRPC to help with the, our grant writing for the Green Communities Task Force. Mr. Wanda currently does it, but I think taking some of that burden off of him, and maybe getting someone that's more familiar with it, might be helpful in creative ways to get some of these new projects off the ground, so. And we have no new meeting scheduled, so. I believe MJTC and MRP, or MJTC is Ken, so it's not.
Ken, yeah. They posted their meeting, and there was a request to see if any of us could cover for them, but I couldn't do it.
I could not either. MRPC?
MRPC, I missed the last one. I had a family emergency, but I'm trying to make them this month, no, I'm sorry, next month, should be early, early in July.
Okay, and.
Nothing for open space.
Nothing for open space. All right, moving on to directors items. Our board vacancy.
Yes, so the ad has been placed. Applications are due as of the 19th of this month. And originally, I think the discussion was trying to have the joint meeting at the board's next meeting on the 26th, but in, in speaking with the chair, and recognizing that Ken wouldn't be around for that meeting, I think there's going to be an alternative proposal. The Board of Health is also in the process of looking for a new member to an elected body, and they are going to be interviewing their applicants prior to the joint meeting. And in speaking with the town manager, she felt that that might be appropriate for the planning board to do as well, so it's a consistent process amongst boards. So it might be that this board meets with those who have applied on the 26th, with the intent of a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen on the 18th. If you feel it's important that the full board be here for those initial interviews, we could look at July 10th and still have plenty of time prior to the July 18th meeting, when the Board of Selectmen would be doing their interviews, their joint interviews with the Board of Health. Now, all of those dates are flexible and obviously subject to, to change and availability, but that's kind of where we're at. Greg and I had had a conversation, and he had mentioned the board potentially having a discussion about potential questions or topics. They would like to hear from applicants for the position on. I don't know if you want to do those as part of an open session. I don't know if you each want to send me two or three questions, and I could synthesize them down into similar questions, distribute them, and have everybody comment individually to me, not have individual or group discussion about them. And then I could just come ready with a set of questions based on the, the feedback I've received. I'm pretty open to this. There's a lot of different ways to do it.
And if I may, just for clarity, the, the application for a person to apply to planning board is simply the Talent Bank form with the checkmark to interest in planning board?
They are accepting the Talent Bank as an application. The, I think, I believe that the advertisement asks for a letter of interest.
Oh, okay.
Because the Talent Bank doesn't have a checkbox for planning board, as planning board is not an appointed.
Okay.
Position. So, it's not something that, most people would look at a Talent Bank and say, oh, there's planning board, I want to do that check. There is an other position, so people could obviously check that, but it's not one of the readily included ones.
Yeah, I believe there was two Talent Bank forms prior to the notice of vacancy. So I did call Elaine, the Board of Selectmen's admin, just to make sure that the Talent Banks that were submitted would be sufficient, and they are, according to her. So.
Very good.
I think they'll be accepting if we get any more applications that will also be.
So an additional letter, letter of interest wouldn't hurt?
It wouldn't hurt, but I don't think it's required either.
More is more.
Well, I mean, from my perspective, this is an appoint, in essence, it's an appointment for one year, right?
It's an appointment until the next election.
Yeah, until the next election. I don't have a problem with it being a private process, where we submit questions, and you submit them to applicants and get them back. I don't think there's any, any need to call people on the floor, because it's not a public.
Oh, so you'd like to distribute them prior to them coming to see you?
Correct, yeah. I mean, if it were, if it were an election that they were running for, I would see.
I, I just want to understand the, what you're, that's fine. I don't think, I think that's a completely reasonable way to do it.
Yeah. But, I'm open to, I mean, that's just my thoughts on it.
So, are we approaching this together with the Board of Selectmen? Are they going to have questions as well, or, I mean, it's not a set process, and I did watch the last one.
It's a joint meeting, is all that it says. And I think that each board comes to a meeting like that prepared in, in their own way, and, you know, even the last time that this happened, I don't think, I don't think that you can necessarily compare the two. You're dealing with different compositions on both boards, so I think even the way that the individuals that compose each board approach it could be, could be very different than, than the way that it sort of manifested last time.
Yeah, I guess, my opinion, I'd like to submit questions ahead of time. I think just calling them up to the podium.
Sure.
Kind of catches them off guard. I think some people, including myself, aren't as articulate when they're standing in front of an audience, so I think we'd probably get more detailed answers from.
So I shouldn't send the spotlight?
Yeah. But again, I don't know if the Board of Selectmen are going to want to submit questions as well, or.
Again, that's.
I'd prefer us all.
That's something I can coordinate with the town manager.
Set of four or five questions that we all receive the answers to, I don't know.
Well.
I'm assuming they'll be basic questions, I mean.
You know, if we're talking about the planning board having a meeting with the person ahead of time.
Mm-hmm.
Then we can, we can do, I guess, whatever you want. You could say, can you submit these answers in writing? You could say, here's the questions, come ready to discuss these. That would then clearly be available for the Board of Selectmen to view or attend. And then at the time that the joint meeting happens, I have a feeling there would be some coordination of, of how that would, would work amongst myself and the town manager through the boards, or the boards through myself and the town manager.
So if the case was that we were going to submit questions to, to have you submit to them and answer, then we could probably solicit the input from Ken while he's not going to be here.
Sure.
Maybe bump it up?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and I guess that's my, my question, you know, if you want to interview them with the full board, then we need to do it when Ken's here, because he's indicated he's unavailable for phone-in for either of those meetings.
Yep.
We can develop those questions in the meantime, because he'd have the ability to communicate directly.
Yep.
So I, if that's what you'd like to do, I can, I can start that process.
I don't have any problem. I think, I think including all of our membership makes, you know.
Yeah.
Rather see all, all of us have a say.
To have everyone's input, but I think if we each come up with three questions, maybe.